All right, thank you all for joining our tonight's Meet the Candidate Forum with the Swanee City Council Candidates. So I definitely want to thank everybody for joining us for tonight. We do have great city council candidates that are running in the Swanee area. I want to first start by kind of level set and we did invite all of these city council candidates that are running in post four and five. However, you know, the ones that you see tonight are the ones that responded. They said they can be here. So we're going to give them this opportunity to introduce themselves to the community, talk a little bit about why they're running and you know, let them make their pitch about why you should support, you know, them for their candidacy for city council in this upcoming November election, which early voting does start on the 14th. So for those of you who live in Swanee, it is an at-large election, which means you get to vote for all of the city council candidates that are on the ballot in each post. So no matter if it's post three, four, or five, you get to vote on all of those city council candidates in Swanee on the ballot. Typically, we'll be voting at your town hall, I mean, city hall. So you'll go to your city hall and vote and looking at the early voting times likely to be from nine to five, nine AM to five PM, October the 14th to the 31st. And then of course, Election Day will be from seven AM to seven PM at the Swanee City Hall. So also just want to go over a couple of other candidate forums that we have that are coming up on October the 7th, Tuesday, seven PM, we will have the Snellville City Council Candidates. So we'll have all the candidates that's running for city council for the city of Snellville, as well as on October the 12th, we will have the Lawrenceville City Council Candidates on October the 12th. And we'll be right back here on Facebook Live, on our YouTube page, as well as on Twitter. For these platforms, both times will be at seven o'clock. So this Tuesday, we'll have Snellville City Council Candidates on October 7th. And then next Sunday, October 12th at seven PM, we'll have the Lawrenceville City Council Candidates and it'll be streaming right back here live on our Facebook page, our YouTube page, and our Twitter page. So at this time, and then finally, final announcement before we bring the candidates in, we do have our upcoming NAACP Town Hall, and this is in collaboration with partner organizations like NCNW, Galileo, AAAF. That will be on October the 14th at six PM at the North Cross Cultural Arts Center in North Cross, Georgia. Please RSVP to the event. It is streaming at the bottom with the link to go RSVP, or you can go to our events page on our Facebook page, or go to our website. But definitely please RSVP to that event. Should be a great Town Hall. We're going to sit down and discuss the big ugly bill. We're going to talk about the upcoming PSC elections, the municipal elections, and then we're going to give you an opportunity to voice any concerns that you feel like are happening in your community. So please come out to the North Cross Cultural Arts Center. It should be a great event. We'll have food. We'll have something for you to drink because we know people be getting off work. So we'll try to, you know, don't come expecting, you know, what we served at the Freedom Fund banquet. It won't be that kind of five-star meal, but it'll at least be something to put something on your stomach before you head home from coming from downtown Atlanta, coming from different parts of Gwinnett County, or different parts of Georgia. But definitely wanted the community to come out to that event. It is a free event, but you do, you are required to RSVP to be able to attend that particular event. It is free, no cost to you. So that being said, one final announcement, our general meeting has been moved to October the 16th on Thursday. So that's not this coming Thursday, because we have our state convention from October the 9th to October the 11th at the Marriott out by the airport in Clayton County. So that's where our national convention will be held at. So at the Marriott Gateway. So from October 9th to the 11th. So if you have not bought your tickets to the event, you can go to the Georgia NAACP website and purchase your tickets to attend as an observer, if you're not a member, or as an adult registration, if you are a member of the NAACP, to attend our state convention. Otherwise, we moved our general meeting to next week's Thursday, which is October the 16th at seven PM. We'll provide an update from the convention, as well as update on the different candidate forums and things like that we've been done leading up to that, as well as additional candidate forums that we have coming at the end of the month with the cities of Dekula and the city of Grayson. That being said, yes, let's bring on our candidates now that we went through brief introductions. All right. And we're going to bring on, you can bring both candidates on stage, please. All right. So what we'll do is just so every candidate can understand some of the little rules because I know when people, you know, run for election, y'all like a tendency to go over time. So we will be timing your answers between questions, but I trust I would give you both more than enough time. And just to kind of level set, you know, where everything is, these two candidates are not running against each other. They're running in two separate city council posts. So they're running against, their opponents unfortunately decided, no, they wasn't going to show. So we have Ted, Mr. Ted Rollins, who's running in post four for city council, and then Ms. T. Nicole Linder, who's running in post five. So they're not running against each other. They're running in two different elections in the city council, for city council in the city of Swanee, which I'm not too far from right now. So I'm in Duluth right now. So at this time, I'm going to set the timer, let y'all to give, open the introductions. And Ms. T. Nicole Linder, I let you go first. So you have two and a half minutes just to introduce yourself, not only to Georgia, but to the community of Swanee.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you so much, President Paul. So my name is T. Nicole Linder, and I am running for the Swanee City Council Post Five. And I am running for, I am running because I believe Swanee can balance progress with preservation, right? So Swanee is growing at a rapid, rapid rate, which is fine, but it must be done wisely. And we can be a city where families can afford to stay, where teachers and first responders can live. So let me give you a little bit about my background. I have a decade of experience in procurement, contract management, and sourcing, and planning. So that, though, with those talents is what I want to bring to the city council. My campaign rests on three pillars: community, connection, and commitment. Community means to me is protecting what makes Swanee special, our welcoming spirit, our green spaces. We need to make sure that development includes intentional planning, not just new buildings, but have better of a balance. I want to preserve the beauty of our parks and trails, while also pushing for it, also being progressive, right? Connection, and connection means listening, really listening. And I'll be honest with you, from listening to the residents, that's not something that they've been getting. And that's not something that they feel is that their voices are not being heard. Our host quarterly community conversations, open hours in the park, so residents can come and talk to me face to face. Commitment means accountability and transparency, from zoning decisions to road projects, to residents knowing what's going on and more about the decisions that are being made with the council. So I envision a Swanee where smart growth, safe roads, small businesses, and clean, connected spaces exist. So tonight, I know everyone on the call may not live in the city of Swanee, but maybe you know someone that does. So I ask, please spread the word to vote for me. T. Nicole Linder, running for post five. Thank you.
All right, you barely beat the timer. Thank you, Ms. T. Nicole Linder. So at this time, we'll turn it over now to Mr. Ted Rollins. Introduce yourself to Georgia residents and the city of Swanee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Paul. I appreciate the NAACP putting this forum on and inviting me. So thank you. Glad to be here. To my fellow candidate, thank you for getting involved. And I just, you know, my background is in ministry. I'm an ordained elder in the United Methodist Church. So they sent us, we do this thing called itinerary. We go where sent. So I've lived in most of greater Atlanta. My wife and I have been married twenty, going on 24 years, and we've lived all over Atlanta. So we've done what's called restart churches, or launch churches. We did in Cobb County. And then I went and pastored one of our largest churches in McDonough, Georgia. I was the youngest pastor they ever had. And somewhere during that process, I think that was around 2011, the bishop said, hey, we've got a church that we think you could revitalize in Swanee, Georgia, and said that Swanee is changing, all those things. I had never heard of Swanee, didn't know where Swanee was. I mean, all I, I lived in Stone Mountain, downtown Atlanta. I lived in Cobb. He said, where? I said, what? Swanee. I had never heard of Swanee. This is 2011. And so I drove out here, and my first thing was, well, this is different. My wife saw the opportunity, and she said, this is a great opportunity here. So long short, I became the pastor of Swanee Parish, United Methodist Church. We rebranded to Swanee Worship Center, and we became one of the fastest growing churches in this community. So what we did that happened, because I used to say, where, where are the black folks? And I used to say that. My daughter, we, we would go to Swanee Town Center, but we loved the community. It just felt at home. And so we've seen Swanee, and we were here 11 years. I know I'm a pastor in Swanee, but we live in Swanee. My wife said, you can move wherever, but we are never leaving Swanee. So we bought two homes here in Swanee, and we just really engaged in the community. Well, we bought one, sold one, then we bought another one. And I've seen Swanee grow and change. And I just, I felt with all this happening in the world today, my dad, my dad was deeply involved in, in social change in the 50s and 60s of Mississippi. And I felt this was a time to act. You know, many times we say, what would we do in the 60s and 70s? And I've studied a lot of Dr. King theology. I just said, this is a time to get active. And so I felt that Swanee is diverse. It needs more diverse representation. So that's why I decided to run.
All right. Thank you. You beat the timer. Good job. Good job. So yes, appreciate that. Now you say you're from Mississippi. I'm gonna get off track a little bit because that's where I'm from. What part of Mississippi?
Yeah, from the Mississippi Delta, Greenville, Mississippi.
Oh, man, you're from my house. We're gonna talk offline. I ain't gonna take a five-four. I'm Greenville as well.
It's one degree of separation.
It is, really.
They don't make tougher people than come out of the Mississippi Delta. I don't even, I don't have to tell you that. You already know that.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna jump into the question, because I think y'all answered most of what I was gonna ask in the very first question. And I may circle back to it, but at this time, and then Ms. Linda, I'll start with you. What do you see as the top three challenges facing Swanee? And then how would you prioritize addressing those challenges?
Okay, top three challenges. Right now, we are dealing with, I'd say, rapid growth. Some may not see it as, as a challenge. And I'm not saying that growth is bad, but we need to slow it down a bit. It is eliminating a great deal of our green spaces. And also with the growth, which is another challenge, is commuting. So when I first moved to Swanee, it would take us maybe seven minutes to get from my house to the interstate. Now it can take anywhere from 20, maybe 30 minutes. And I am just to Ted, to give you a reference, I can walk to Swanee Town Center. That's like a 10-minute walk from my house. So commuting issues, rapid growth, and visibility from the council, I think are some of the issues that, that, that we face right now.
Okay. All right. Same question to you, Mr. Rollins. What do you see as the top three challenges for Swanee? And how would you prioritize addressing it?
Yeah, I think Nicole really hit, she really hit that on the head. I can concur. You know, the growth part, I, I, I think it was inevitable. It was such a, such a great place to live. And you know, between community engagement, they've done a good job, I think, in some aspects, because Swanee is unique, and someone who's lived all over. But continued, how do you balance that? I could, I concur with that, because it's going to continue to grow. We've, we've been here 2011. I have just seen it, you know, it's just grow, grow, grow. I think it is inevitable that it's going to keep growing. Three years from now, like the rest of the world, it's changing fast. So how do we still keep healthy growth, keep the community feel? I think that's number one. Also, the schools, one of the things that, once I got out here, for me, education's been a big part of my life. My dad's a high school superintendent, I mean superintendent schools and high school principal. My mother taught school for 30 years. I'm a big believer in education, keeping the schools top quality, and partnering with schools, and finding out, you know, how do we after-school programs? Because, I mean, they, they have good schools here, but how do you keep them at the top notch? Because as long as schools are good, a lot of good things happen. I think it's why you're seeing a lot of the growth, because companies want to come here. And, and, and also, you know, safety. How do you keep Swanee safe with the growth? How do you make sure you hire in diversity? That's another thing is I see policemen, firemen, Nicole, I'm not far, we probably neighbors, because I can walk to Swanee Town Center too. And you know, they built a new fire station to make sure the firemen and the police are diverse, as diverse, this, as diverse as this community is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm both doing good with the time. So next question I have, and I'm, I guess I'll start with you, Ted, since you already was, was on there. We'll, we'll switch it around a little bit. Now, y'all keep, y'all both talked about growth. What role should the city council play in guiding that growth and development in Swanee? Because we know a lot of developers are approaching, not only, you know, the city council, but county commissioners. And I know that's a thing that the county commissioner is dealing with, you know, all this development, development, development. And a lot of these local city municipalities are pushing back against that. Even the county commissioner is catching some pushback against it. But what, how do you see the city council playing a role in trying to guide that growth and development, specifically Swanee? So that's what you're running for as far as city council?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's a great question. One of the things, you know, as I've done my research, that a lot of council members, they've been there a long time. And I'm not against it, but Swanee has changed a lot. And so I need to know how that process works. You know, you're right. I mean, there's just been so much developments. And who makes those decisions? And how do those big companies that are building new apartments, a new infrastructure, how are those decisions being made? And does the, do the residents understand the impact, not just of Swanee, but how it impacts Sugar Hill and Duluth and all those things? So I really would like to know how those decisions are made. As of today, I'm not sure. You know, I think there's, I'm sure there's some form of cooperation with the state of Georgia and the county. But I want to, I want to be a voice in the room to say, you know, how does this impact every part of Swanee, not just one part, but also surrounding communities as well?
Okay. And then the same question for you, Ms. T. Nicole Linder. You know, how do you, what role do you see the city council playing in guiding the growth and development in Swanee?
Um, I mean, I totally agree with Ted. Let's, you know, get elected, get in those seats, and actually find out how those decisions are made. And I think, again, it goes back to one of the issues, which is transparency, letting citizens know how they are just making these decisions as to what development should come and what businesses should come. And also, as I stated, development is great, but it has to be intentional. So let's not just put up a building or, or have a business come in just because. Because as Ted stated, that does, it is a trickle-down effect. It's more congestion on our streets. It also affects Sugar Hill. It also affects Duluth, our neighboring cities. So I think we start, one, with trying to understand how those decisions are made, and then, then we move forward from there.
Okay. And then my next question is, and this will be, since y'all be on this, this topic, in 2021, Swanee City Council unanimously rejected a proposed zoning amendment that would have been for planned park neighborhood option. So that would have allowed for desert development in certain areas of Swanee, if developers set aside some land amenities, or like some type of environmental preservation. Because I know one of the things I heard in Dekula, but it had this big, beautiful park that's kind of been sort of destroyed because developers have came in and build more housing, so they don't have as much of that park anymore. So I'm assuming, when I researched this about Swanee, similar things, I guess, I guess people in Swanee was advocating for, hey, you know, let's, let's do some type of planned park neighborhood, where, hey, y'all just don't come in and destroy, you know, the, the landscape and some of this beautiful land and things and amenities that we may have, and develop some sort of set aside. But the council unanimously rejected that proposal. So I'll start with you, Ms. Linda. Do you agree with the council decision to reject it? Why or why not?
Um, well, one of, again, one of my platforms is preserving our green space. Because with development comes, you know, them rolling over more of our green space. So I'm all for anything that is going to preserve our green space. But of course, development and preserving of the green space can, it can happen at the same time. Again, it goes back to being intentional with development. So I, I hope I'm, I was clear with that.
Okay. All right. Same question to you, Mr. Rollins.
I mean, it's, it's a good question. And if I, if I were to guess, it was voted against, because you had, you've had the same group of people together for a long time, and they're making the major decisions. I'm not saying that they shouldn't make the major decisions, but are they in line with what the community desires, and how the community sees how decisions should be made? So if I was a part of the council at that point in time, I would have, I would have at least stressed my opinion strongly. I mean, the people have spoken. So how do we balance how we have led historically? Because they probably have led like that historically. And I'm not saying they have not done a good job, a good job in certain areas, because they have. Swanee is a good place to live. But there's certain areas that need great improvement and changes. And so to your point, I don't want decisions made in a vacuum moving forward, especially as Swanee is growing, is changing. So we need more transparency, as Nicole has said. We need more representation, because, you know, a lot of people are being priced out. I've had, you know, in our church, there are people who lived in Swanee that now, you know, had to tell me, hey, they no longer could afford to live in Swanee. And so that is an important dynamic that we have to address and think about as we move forward.
Okay. All right. So you talked about equity earlier, so I want to focus in on that. So back in 2020, you know, you had thousands of Swanee residents, and you know, this was doing, you know, a lot of Black Lives Matter support during George Floyd. What steps should the city take to ensure that all demographic groups are feeling heard and respected when it comes to city decisions? You spoke on that a little bit earlier, but can you do a deeper dive, Mr. Rollins, on that?
Yeah. Yeah. Just, I just think, I mean, thank you for that question. Just being more intentional. Now, you know, I do remember during that time, because I was here, one thing, I'm out and about all the time. I'm, Nicole, I'm, I'm hanging out. I am in Swanee. I'm fully ingrained. I'm everywhere. So during the Black Lives Matter, there were some representation, but I noticed something. They came from other areas. Now, the reason that is, some of, you know, it's the probably the demographic of African Americans in Swanee. But that was too big of an issue, not to address it intentionally. And so we've, we just got to do a better job. I was noticing, I use this week's example, example, they had the Black Arts Festival in Swanee. But I noticed that the same resources were not put into that, or marketing that are put into other events. There's no question about it. And so I was there, and I noticed the turnout was not as strong. But the marketing did not go as strong into it. So when issues like this, that's why we have to have a strong voice at the table. It could have been just unintentionally during that time, Black Lives Matter. But I would have said, hey, this is a unique moment in time and history. Swanee is diverse. Our surrounding communities are diverse. How do we speak to this? But if you don't, you know, if you don't have a voice in the room that's passionate about it, I'm passionate about this subject, then it's easy to just, you know, get along to get along. And, and I think Swanee did some of that during this, during that time. But not, not only Swanee, a lot of communities did. So that's why we've got to get in and fight during this time, especially right now. Because unfortunately, I don't think, I think we're going, we might see more of that over the next year or so than less of it.
Okay. All right. Same, same question to you.
Okay. As it relates to, and I'm gonna address your, the, the housing affordability, right? So my daughter, oldest daughter just graduated, well, 2023, graduated from North. So I know they met at, some of the students met at Swanee Town Center to, in support for the Black Lives Matter. And it was something that they organized. And as Ted said, you know, it was more people that came from the outside into Swanee, but she and a couple of her classmates did go. Now, housing affordability, that's also part of something that I want to look into. Because I do believe that teachers, service workers, they deserve to live in the community that they serve, right? So Atlanta has, is starting construction on what is called the Atlanta Teacher Village, which is affordable housing for teachers and seniors. And that is something I would like to work with developers and business owners, owners to have here in Swanee as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Then my next question, this is, you know, related to Swanee as well. And I'm trying to get more specific questions to the general. So in Swanee, Swanee maintains, and Ms. Linda, you can, you can stay, we can keep Ms. Linda highlighted, because I'll let her take this one. On Swanee's website, they, they have an open budget portal, where citizens can go in, look at the financial data. Now, I'm not sure if any one of you looked at it, because like I said, I didn't give you all these questions ahead of time to prepare. But do you believe, if you've been there to look at that, that, that financial data on their website, which is swanee.com, do you believe the level of detail they currently got published is sufficient? And if you don't believe it's sufficient, you know, how would you advocate for additional transparency?
Um, having, having the numbers on the website are fine. But again, another one of the things that I stand on is to, to break that down for some citizens. Not everyone can look at a budget and see what it is. Some people, it just looks like numbers. But you know, you have to be, again, transparent and tell them, this is what this is. Like, let's break this down. Let's put this in in clear English, so everyone can understand and not just give someone, you know, this is the budget, and, and leave it to them to figure it out. So that goes in line with hosting, you know, forums, open forums, where, you know, get into the community and let residents know, hey, we got the budget, and this is what the budget is going to do. This is just breaking it down. So that's, that's my stance on it being published online.
Okay. Same question to you, Mr. Rollins, about the financial data. Swanee got it posted. Okay, you got a budget portal posted. Do you believe the level of detail that's current, they currently got published sufficient? Or do you feel like, no, are you on the same side as Ms. Linda? Do you feel like it should be a little bit more transparency in terms of breaking down those numbers?
Um, I've been living through church budgets most of my career. So I, I understand some of that. You know, they, you, you present the big picture, but the devil is definitely in the details. And there definitely not enough details. And I got it. Most of that is intentional, because they know certain, only a small percentage of the people are going to look at it anyway. I think we got to do more, we got to do more. I think Linda mentioned, I I think Linda mentioned, I've not met outside of the mayor. I've never, I've never personally met any of the council members. I've not seen them out and about. I'm gonna be just, I'm not, even the recent events just recently, where we could at least talk about it. So I think they need to let's let's have town hall meetings, because I think Swanee has run like a small town for a long time. So a small group of people making most of the decisions. And I got it, a lot of small towns operate like that, but Swanee is no longer a small town. I mean, it over the next five years, it could easily, because I've seen it double in my time out here. Five years from today, Swanee will be double its size. It's inevitable. You you're not gonna be able to stop that, some of that growth. It's just inevitable because of the schools, the way Gwinnett County is growing. And so they've operated like a like a town of eight thousand to now a town of over, city of over twenty plus thousand. And and I would make the argument, over the next five years, Swanee could be thirty-five thousand people, forty thousand people easily. So you've got to be more transparent. You've got to have town halls. You you got to have open communication with the the community where they can come in and ask tough questions, because right now that does not exist. Living out here, that does not exist. I I wouldn't know, a city council person could walk right beside me and I wouldn't know who they were.
All right. Thank you for that. And I I agree with you. I mean, you know, we do need our city council officials to be more visible in the community, other than going to the website to find out who you are. I think that that that's very important when it comes to the transparency. And when it comes to like, you know, kind of like what Ms. Linda said, explaining the budget, giving more details, like you said, having some type of town halls, because again, you could be next door neighbor with your city council and not even know it, which is why elections like these is important. And I just want to just pause for a minute on the questions, just to ask anybody that's watching live to definitely drop any questions you may have, especially if you live in the city of Swanee in the chat. Even if you don't live in the city of Swanee, you just got questions and you may you may live in the unincorporated part of Swanee, you know. So again, I you know, I live in unincorporated sections of like the Grayson area and so I I get it, you know, but if, you know, when we do our town hall and grace, I'm definitely gonna be asking a question, because decision that the council make affect me too, even if I don't live in the city. So even if you live out in unincorporated, please drop your questions in the chat. Or if you just got any questions, please drop them in the chat. Please do that, you know, at this time, and we'll definitely try to get them in. And I do want to remind everyone, Mr. Rollins is not running against Mrs. Linda and Mrs. T. Nicole Linder. Mr. Teddy Rollins is running in post four. Ms. T. Nicole Linder is running in post five. They're running in two separate posts. We did invite their opponents on to come on tonight and state their case of why they should either stay in office or why they should be voted for. But unfortunately, we didn't get any feedback from them about being able to attend. So we're gonna talk to the people that are here. So moving on, I'm gonna go to the the next set of questions. Of course, we know the cost of of inflation and infrastructure costs are are increasing. How will you resist the pressure to raise taxes and fees while still trying to maintain the the quality and level of service that Swanee provides? And and Mr. Teddy Rollins, since you already on, we'll go to you first.
Yep, yeah, that's a boy, that's the that's the the question of the day. That's tough, you know, and that's a big, that's as I listen and talk with people, that's one of the big concerns. And you know, I I sit in the middle of that. I mean, things are high, these are already expensive, overly expensive, things are higher now that they probably, you know, it feels tighter. Things just feel tighter. Groceries are so tight. So that's the last thing anyone wants is increase in in taxes. The the button is, but we also want great protection. We also want good, you know, safe neighborhoods. I mean, I I lived in different areas. Swanee is safe. I I can, it feels safe. So that's gonna, that's gonna cause the roads, you know, they're 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 good out here. They're trying to keep them good. And so I think just finding a healthy balance and to where we're not just raising taxes, just because we think people can afford it. And I think you you have to be knowledgeable of the times. Right now is not a good time to raise anything. So if I I'm, I go on record, if right today, if if I was voting to raise taxes today, the answer is that, no. Because people, every penny matters right now. You know, let's relook at this two years from today. Let's relook at it three years from today. But right now, my answer would be, no, I'm not gonna raise taxes. We just got to tighten our belt, because people are hurting in a lot of ways right now. So that's that's my short answer.
Same question to you, Ms. Ms. T. Linda.
And and Ted, I would be right along beside you with that, no. Is raising taxes now would not be wise. But again, it goes back to the transparency. That's one of the things from talking to people in the community, no one is knowing, no one knows where our tax money is going. I mean, we do know that we're getting a new walkable overpass, but they really want to know where their tax dollars are going. So again, it goes back to the transparent, being transparent. If if it's, if you're raising it, explain to us why. Show us what it is that you're doing with these tax dollars. But I agree with you, Ted. I'd be right alongside with you with saying no to the the raise of taxes. Yep.
Okay. All right. And as we get closer to the close, I do got a couple of more questions. Don't see any in the chat right now, so I'm gonna keep going. Let's go here. So going back to the diversity question, I want to kind of come back to that. Would you all support allowing public statements? Because I'm not sure how the council works in Swanee right now. In terms of allowing public comment at their council meetings. But would you all support? And this is just looking at it more broadly. Would you support the community being able to make public statements at the city council meetings? Having programs set up in Swanee that's aimed at, you know, diversity training, especially within the city departments. So it can be a more inclusive local government, because Swanee is a very diverse community, very diverse, probably one of the most diverse communities in Gwinnett County. So how would you all approach that? Both internally and externally, trying to be inclusive of all that different diversity. And and Ms. T. Nicole Linder, you can start.
Okay. Yes, I am for citizens coming into the meetings and having having a voice, because that is, that's it. We, as the council, we are there to first listen. Leadership starts with listening. And we serve and work for the citizens. So there's, to me, I don't even, it's a no brainer as to trying to silence a citizen from coming into the meeting and actually talking to the council that serviced them. As far as diversity, I I do agree, we are a very diverse community, and I do think there should be some form of training in 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 city, in city hall, as well as throughout the community. I think there should be opportunities for that.
Okay. Same question for you, Mr. Teddy Rollins. How would you, you know, would you, first of all, like I said, I'm not sure if Swanee already does it. They may already allow public comment. But if they don't, would you support allowing public comment? And also, you know, with the community being able to have input in the the public meetings or what they call typically the business sessions. And also, would you, how would you support the the diversity within the community internally, in terms of, you know, diverse staff on the, you know, that works for the city as well as diversity in terms of the city support, like you just mentioned earlier, different events, being more inclusive with the different events, whether it's the Asian community, the Hispanic community, the Black community, as well as the white community. But all those other groups that may get overlooked when there's events happening in Swanee.
Yeah, well, I mean, thank you for that. You know, Swanee has, they, I like to call it a banner ministry, because I call it ministry, because I I like banners too, so I'm always putting banners out at my church. And Swanee does a good job of that. However, however, they could, they could leverage that when big decisions are being made. You know, they could let people know, hey, the the council meets every second of fourth Monday of the month. And absolutely, open forum. You know, I I just believe Swanee has operated. I I just, you know, I have met the mayor, talked with him. I know the I know a few people who've worked at town hall, city hall. I think it's operated like a small town, and because it could do, it it was easy to do that. And change is hard. And so I think this is a unique moment in history that you, just what you said, Duluth, Swanee, it's it's not only the most diverse area in Gwinnett County. Swanee Duluth is one of the most diverse places in the country. And so with that richness, matter of fact, it's considered a lot of ways, it's ground zero for diversity. It's Duluth, Swanee, Sugar Hill, it's it, they're case studies for the rest of the country as far as healthy diversity. I mean, you, my neighbors are everything, Indian, Asian, black, white. But with that, it you've got to have equal representation. So absolutely. And then Swanee has to be intentional though. We can't say you got to open forum, and then nobody knows when the meetings are. And or, you know, or you're not allowed. It's too much change is happening right now for not to have community engagement and partnerships where voices are heard.
Okay. All right. And then I think we had a question in the chat, and I know my 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 behind the scenes person having trouble pulling that up, so I'll pull it up and throw it on the screen so we can ask him, Mr. Rollins, you can stay right there. And so we got a question from Shan-Tech. She said, how would you support small business and entrepreneurs, especially minority and women owned businesses?
Man, well, I'll jump on that one, because just because I'm passionate about it. And that is, Swanee has to be intentional about it. Because with the growth, you know, you, we're seeing a great Whataburger coming up on the highway. That's gonna, that's gonna bring some more traffic without a question. And some of that is inevitable. You, we've got a KFC building and a Sonic building that are not vacant. And I I already, I'm sure Swanee, city council in Swanee, they've gotten all kind of requests for those two locations. Because nothing stays empty here too long or unintentional. Because it's just so much growth, so much, you know, dollars being spent. They're gonna do a better job. Now, that's an area we've got to figure out how to do a better job of small businesses, because what will happen? You rent is high to rent local spaces. It's going, rent has gone up, you know, just like everything else is going up. So what, small businesses are being priced out. There's a local business in Swanee Town Center. Product was pretty good. I'm not gonna call the name, but that rent, they got rents being, they're being priced out. There are only major franchises can come. Or major, bigger, small businesses. Let me say it that way. And so we're gonna have to figure that out, because you're gonna look around and there's, you're not gonna be able to rent space. Rent, rent is high. I used to own TCBY years, years, a long time ago. And so I know a little about this. You've got to find spaces that you can rent, especially. And but also, how do we promote better small businesses? Swanee does have an event once a year that they bring out, you know, they do support food trucks and things of that nature, but we got other business ideas. We got to really do a better job of that and utilize both the parks, both parks for small business owners, people who work from home, and we just got to be intentional about that. Is that on the calendar? Are we talking to landlords about locations? And are we intentional even of how we're promoting spaces for lease? That we can make sure that as as Swanee grows with all these bigger names, because bigger names are coming, isn't it? It is inevitable. Whataburger, there's gonna be some other big names coming real soon. And how do we make sure that they don't take up all the lease space, so that the mom and pop can still exist?
All right. And same question for you, Ms. T. Nicole Linder. How will you support small business and entrepreneurs, especially minority and women owned business?
So first, I would like to find out if there, if the small businesses, especially in the town center are offered any grants, you know, or incentives for small businesses to come into the town center. So if if not, then that is something I would look into. Let's do initiatives to have the small businesses come in, especially into the town center, because it's very, it's it's very family. And I think that is, I would consider it to be almost the heart of Swanee in that area, right? So as far as marketing, we do have the Swanee Magazine that comes out and but maybe in that Swanee magazine, they do a list of all of our local businesses. And I don't even think we have a taste of Swanee. So perhaps having one of those being added on festival, the Taste of Swanee, where businesses can come and we taste their foods, look at their services. So those are just a few of my my ideas.
All right. Thank you. All right. So as we get ready to wrap up and come to a close, I'm gonna update the timer to, I'm gonna give you three minutes. I'm not gonna regret it, but I'm gonna give it to you. To give some closing remarks, but before, I'm I'm kind of level set, so the community can know. So we do have Ms. T. Nicole Linder running in post five, her opponent and Mr. Peter Chappantier, a Chappantier, who is the current incumbent on the city council. At this time, we did invite Mr. Peter to be on tonight, but unfortunately, we didn't get a response about a timeframe he can be available. And then Mr. Teddy Rollins, or Ted Rollins, as they got it down here, is running in post four, which is gonna be against Ms. Beth Hillsh, Hillshire, Hillshire and David Martinez. So that could be a runoff, more than likely will be a runoff, since it's three people in that race. So at this time, Ms. T. Nicole Linder, I'll let you go first. Please state your case to the citizens that'll be voting in this coming fall election for this city, for all three city council posts, because there is a post three with like Lenia Miller and Brittany Wolf, who are also not with us tonight. But state your case for why you should be the city council candidate and rep, to represent post five in the city of Swanee over Mr. Peter.
Okay. All right. So again, I'm running on transparency. Transparent leadership, right? My platform is simple, keep Swanee growing in a way that works for the people who live here. That means smart growth. That means protecting our green spaces, addressing the traffic and the community commuting challenges that we have. And also keeping our small businesses thriving. I also believe in community safety and engagement, workforce housing that I talked about as far as teachers and first responders and working families being able to afford to live in the communities that they serve. And in closing, at the end of the day, this campaign is not about politics. It is about making sure that Swanee remains safe, vibrant and sustainable for every resident. So again, you may not live in the city of one Swanee, but you may know someone. So please tell them to vote. T. Nicole Linder, post five, city council. Thank you so much. Thank you guys for having me.
All right. Thank you. You kept it under three minutes. Good job. So if you want to learn more about Ms. T. Nicole Linder, I do got her link on the screen. So please click on, you know, please, you know, copy and paste it, write it down, take a screenshot, take a picture. And then check out her website to learn more. If you want to support her campaign, I'm sure there's a donate button somewhere on the campaign to donate. I know y'all are always sending money to Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. But these are the races where the candidates really need your hundred dollars or your fifty dollars or your two hundred dollars. Because these are the races that typically get overlooked. Not only presidential candidates, even governor candidates get, you know, billions and millions of dollars, but these are the candidates that that really could use those dollars. So if you want your money to really have an impact, especially on your local community, because city council do control a lot of things from making decisions on ways, making decisions on development, making decisions on, you know, cleaning up different parts of the community. Making a decision on too much development coming into the community, you know, definitely, you know, support your local candidates, whoever that may be. So at this time, we'll pivot to now Mr. Teddy Rollins, who has three people running in his race. And let me pull those names up again. So running in post, which he's running in post four. He has Ms. Beth Hill, Hillshire, Hills, Hillshire. And David Martinez is the other candidate that's also running in post four. So this election, just for voters to understand, candidates do have to get fifty percent plus one to win an election. So more than likely, post four will be a runoff. So at this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ted Rollins to make his, Mr. Teddy Rollins to make his case about why he needs to be the candidate you need to support come November.
Yeah. Well, well, thank you for that. And and as I think Nicole said earlier, you know, even if you don't live in Swanee, or you know someone, you know, just talk with people, because I I'm in it to win it. I didn't get in it just because, you know, I I jumped in it to win it. Uh, or you know someone, you know, just talk with people, cuz I, I'm in it to win it, I didn't get in it just because, you know, I, I jumped in it to win it. Uh, because, you know, the incumbent um, has been in that position for fifteen plus years. And if she's reelected, that means she will, she would have been make, part of making the decisions for over twenty plus years in Swanee. I think that's long enough. Um, I'm, I think that's too long, matter of fact, I can tell you, if I am elected, I am not gonna try to serve twenty years on the council. If I can't do it in four years, eight max, you know, just like the same thing we say about Congress, it, I mean, there should be time limits. I think there should be time limits on the city council, uh, because it, it is a lot different today than when she first got elected. And and, and also, I mean, it's a unique moment in history. Um, as Paul, as you've mentioned, you know, the, on the ground roots, that's where change really takes place, I believe that. I watched my dad do that, and you know, right now, you, you, it's time to get in the gutter and do the work, it's not enough just to complain about, this is just me. About what's happening at the White House, what, what, what's the agenda, Project Twenty Twenty Five, we can sit back and talk about it all we want to. But in the ground zero, local level is where we can make some level of impact, and so if I'm elected, I'm gonna work, I'm gonna talk about Project Twenty Twenty Five. I'm gonna talk about local issues and how they, I mean, how they, things from the top impact people from um, on the bottom. And also, I'm gonna be, I'm in the community, I won't hide. Um, you know, I'll be easy to find, if people wanna talk to me, I live out here like Nicole says, I'm at every major event. I'm, I'm, I mean, I, my wife and I, we walk sometime to talk, Town Center, I won't hide, I'd be easy to find. That we can, we can have true communication, and, no lastly, I, when I came to Swanee. Um, and I came to the churches, I think first Sunday, my daughter's little girl, I'll never forget, she said, she said, Dad, anybody come to church? I think maybe twenty people came that Sunday, cuz we come from a very lost church, and and the church was hidden, you couldn't find it, nobody knew of it. I mean, but how we grew is, I would just go out in Swanee Town Center every day. Every day, every, and just talk to people, hand out cards, I was at every major event, Swanee Town Center. Taste of barbecue, taste of whatever you had, I was there. Handing out cards, talking with people, that's how we grew, we didn't have any money to spend on marketing, and two years later, we were one of the fastest churches in our denomination. I think the same thing works, is you've gotta partner with the community, you gotta talk with people, yeah, and then you gotta take what you hear. And allow it to make impact in the city, so that's why I'm running. Um, I love to hear from you, my cell phone is on the. The website, and I, if you have any questions about Swanee or engagement, please call me or text me anytime.
Barely made it. Alright, so first of all, I definitely wanna thank all of both uh, candidates, Mr. Teddy Rollins or Ted Rollins. As well as Ms. T Nicole Linder for coming on to our program tonight, uh, like I said, we posted throughout the night. Um, their website, so you can always go back and uh, look at that information. Um, and get, you know, you know, anytime they spoke, we tried to, you know, post that, because once again, you know, that's our way of. You know, kinda highlighting the candidates, so that voters can go learn a little bit more about each of the candidates, as well as. Um, go back and and donate, like I say, your, your, your dollars go further when you donate in these city council races. In these school board races, in these state senate, state house representative races. Uh, versus giving it to Joe Biden or Kamala Harris or whoever the next, uh, you know, Donald Trump or whoever the next Republican or Democratic. Uh, candidate, you know, those, those uh, presidential candidates, George Bush, when he ran, they get billions and millions of dollars from. The political machine, but it's these local candidates, they don't raise, you know, the billions and millions of dollars, and so. You know, if you're gonna take a hundred dollars and give it to, if you're not gonna donate it to us, to support the groundwork that we do. In terms of doing nonpartisan knocking on the doors, if you're gonna support a particular political candidate, give it to your city council. Somebody that you wanna see on the city council, on the school board, or running for judge, uh, superior court judge, or state judge. Or running for state rep or state senate, you know, cuz those are the people that really need those dollars. So I wanna uh, thank the candidates again, uh, I don't think my person in the back can hear me, so I'm gonna uh, remove y'all off the stage. Uh, at this time, but thank y'all for coming, and just a few quick announcements before we kinda close out. So tomorrow, we do have our upcoming, not tomorrow, Tuesday, sorry, skipping the day. Uh, Tuesday, October seventh, we will have the Snellville City Council candidates. And look like everybody that's running for city council in Snellville will be there to uh, state their case about why, so that will be a two hour program. Which the first hour, um, for a Snellville is concerned, um, let me pull that information back up. Um, so as far as Snellville is concerned, that very first hour, we will feature post four. Uh, which will be Mr. CJ Pitts and Dan Russell, uh, going head to head, that'll be the seven o'clock hour. At the eight o'clock hour, we will do post five, which will have Mr. Todd Warner, who's the current incumbent. And Catherine Hardrick, uh, as the uh, person running against him for post five for Snellville City Council in the second hour. First of all, I wanted to give a big shout out and thanks to our sponsors, which is Gregory Levitt Funeral Home, the only black funeral home. Here in Gwinnett County, so please, if you're looking to bury your loved ones, please check with them first before you check around with any other funeral home. Um, especially if you're a person of African descent, and then if you're looking for a job, please reach out to ARC Temporary Staffing. Um, they are a organization that can connect you with different job markets and help get you employed. So again, it's ARC, A R K, Temporary Staffing, please connect with them if you're in, in search of a job. I wanna thank uh, both candidates, Mr. Teddy Rollins and Ms. T Nicole Linder for joining us tonight. And again, I, we will see you right back here on Tuesday, October the seventh, for Snellville City Council candidates. And then we'll see you again on Sunday, October the twelfth, um, at seven PM with the Lawrenceville City Council candidates. And all candidates, both the incumbents as well as the people running against the incumbents, will be part of that program. And then finally, please RSVP to our upcoming um, town hall, which will be at the North Cross Cultural Arts Center. Starting at six PM on October the fourteenth, um, at bit.ly, B I T dot L Y forward slash power of the ballot. Should be a great town hall, N A C P is partnering with N C N W, North uh, Metro, Panhandle, Linnick. Um, Legal Women Voters, uh, Triple A F, as well as Galileo, to bring you this event, we will have food for you to eat. Uh, it won't be uh, you know, full course meal, but it'll be enough to keep your stomach full. For the two hours, that will be keeping you, an hour and a half, shall I say, that will be keeping you for that event. So please come out, let your voice be heard, listen to why it's important to vote, and again, check your status, check your status, check your status, go to mvp.sos.g a.gov. Again, it's mvp.sos.g a.gov, and check your voter registration status. Um, if you're not registered to vote, tomorrow is, I mean, Tuesday, tomorrow. Um, is the last day to go ahead and register to vote, so please, you know, you can register on that exact same website if you're an unregistered voter. Please go ahead and take advantage of doing it now, I wanna thank uh, I, I guess, our candidates for coming on uh. Uh, tonight, and I'll see you all on Tuesday, October the seventh, and we will be with our Snellville City Council candidates, y'all have a great night.